So we do have a quorum. Councilman Podeska, will you lead us in our invocation? And Councilman McComber, will you lead us in our pledge?
Yep. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity and especially for this technology that allows us to continue our meetings in these challenging times. We ask a blessing to be upon our cities, especially our police and fire departments as they continue to service our needs in a face-to-face situation. That everyone involved will be protected. We ask for thy help in continuing, moving forward through these restrictions. Pray that the, that they'll be lifted soon and we'll all be able to return to our regular routine soon. We thank thee for this time to discuss the needs of the city. Pray that we'll go through the meeting quickly and, and be able to accomplish the things we have on the agenda. In this, we pray for, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Will everyone please rise? And please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, that didn't work as well.
Thank you, Councilman Podeska and McComber for letting me put you on the spot there. We have public input. It was requested that the residents send in public input electronically. We have received no public input as of this time, so I will open the public input and close it. Is there any questions from the council?
Mayor, we do have three people in the audience. Is anyone here for the public hearing? Bless you. We're good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Reports, does the council have anything to report?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Today, I participated in the governor's brief for cities and counties in, in response to the coronavirus. Much of the information conveyed was similar to the meeting from, or the, the press briefing that was done earlier this week, or last week, I mean. But one thing that they are encouraging is for people to, while still obeying the, you know, the social distancing and trying to, to keep numbers down, to also take this opportunity to, if you're not at work, to maybe get outside and go to the, the state parks or the national parks. I know that there's some issues with that, with some of the cities choosing to shut, shut down hospitality, but as much as possible, we need to try and keep the economy going through this, this time. And so I continue to patronize restaurants that you might normally patronize, although use the drive-throughs and stuff like that. But there are still ways for us to continue our lives as, as normally as possible. And they want to stress that so that we can, that, you know, there's talk of flattening the curve and they, they, they are also talking about wanting to flatten the dip, the economic dip that this, this type of situation can cause. So that's, that was the main take-home message from, from the governor and the lieutenant governor today.
And I put out, I sent a thing to David earlier today showing what Richfield City did with listing what businesses were open for curbside, drive-through, or delivery in their community. He was going to talk to the chamber about doing something from the chamber, maybe we do something that's localized to our communities so that we have some smaller businesses that could benefit from people being aware that they are open and able to serve them.
I think, I think that would be great. That's exactly the kind of thing that they were talking about, as any way we can encourage people to still patronize local businesses is beneficial. And in addition, we may want to, you know, any of the businesses in our city, they, the federal government has opened up a lot of money through the Small Business Association, through the SBA. There's been a lot of money made available to help them through this time. And so any, but, any of our local businesses, maybe that contact David, he might mention that to them, that that's, that's an opportunity for them if they need, need some bridge financing.
If I may, Councilman Porter, add to that, we've actually gone through that for our business, and so it's now currently available on the SBA's website that they can go to.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other reports? Mark, administration?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you. We are operating as, as we spoke about late last week and, and indicated. The only thing that is somewhat new is we received word just a few minutes ago from Chief Campbell recommending that we do some sort of an emergency declaration. We'll look into that and possibly try and schedule just an electronic meeting for the, the council at some point to do that when it's appropriate. And again, we're going to be following your lead on that. But for the council, you did receive an email about 15 minutes before this meeting started. You may want to take a look at that and then we can discuss that at a future point. But again, it could be a one-item emergency meeting, and it could be done with as little as, I believe, four hours' notice. So we can jump on that at some point in the future for, for you, if, if that's something you'd like us to do. Otherwise, we're operating as indicated, just more for the public. We have implemented a, a curbside pickup with the library. So our library is closed as far as people going into the library. However, if people order and, and place bookholds online, they can come then pick it up at City Hall, and staff will bring the books out to them and basically honor the social distancing requirements and requested social distancing. But we are still offering those services as the council is aware and as the public is aware. We've suspended our recreation programs. We've suspended our civic events programs. We have limited interaction with people here and the public here at City Hall, down to our lobbies only, as well as in some of our other buildings. We've canceled all external meetings, and we're operating basically as was described to you last week in the email that you received. So if you have any other questions, we have been pleasantly surprised at how much business we've been able to conduct electronically, and I think this meeting is an example of how we can use innovations and technology to meet the, the letter of what has been asked of us and at the same time sustain essential governmental operations. So Mayor, Council, thank you for the flexibility you've given us. Thank you for your leadership in this time, and we look forward to continuing to try and serve the needs of the community as best we can during this time. Thank you.
Mark, along those lines, another thing that was brought up by the lieutenant governor is that they are looking at ways to perhaps relax some of the open meeting laws to allow for more meetings like this and, and to, you know, eliminate the need for a, a neck, a, a physical nexus site for meetings and stuff like that. So that's something to watch for coming down the pipe.
Thank you very much.
Okay, department reports were sent out in your packet so you could review them. Does anybody have any questions for any of the department heads?
Mayor, I have one, if that's all right?
Yes.
On, on the planning department, I was just looking at just before. I'm presuming, it shows a downward trend on the number of building permits. I'm presuming that's just because you're using the year-to-date base versus an annualized number? Oh, I guess that's me.
Are you referring to this slide right here?
Uh, yeah, is that the one that has the line?
No, you, you've mentioned building.
Or application, sorry.
Yeah, just, well, the, the number there is, it's just year-to-date at this point.
Okay, just one of them has a trend line.
I, you, you may have the old version, I took that trend line off.
Okay.
But, yeah, obviously with my numbers here on the screen, it just shown year-to-date, and obviously we're only a couple of months into the year. We still expect our numbers to equal last year.
Okay, that's good. I'd just say at the trend line, you just make sure it's either not, not there or it's annualized, but you've already taken care of that. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions? Okay, business items. Fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget amendments, resolution R. 20-13.
Mayor, we have Justin Sorensen here to answer any questions that the, the council may have. He'll be very brief in his presentation.
The applicant's on, is that the applicant one?
Correct.
Oh.
It's blinking. All right, I hope you're able to hear me tonight. Yes, this is our fifth budget amendment of the year. We typically do these to respond to the needs of the departments in the city. There's nothing particularly exciting about this one. We had some increase for court standby with the new court building. Also, some stuff needed for our fire department for the new truck they're going to be bringing online this summer. Just pretty typical stuff, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond to it.
Mayor, real quickly, I did receive a, a quick question on what is the bond call? That is for the special improvement district in the south end of the city, and because development has been frankly going very well, a lot of the, the property owners are paying off their special improvement district bonds early. And because of that, we have the capability of retiring some of those bonds early. So we've received the revenue as they've paid off their properties. This is an expenditure adjustment to match the expenditure of us paying off those bonds early and authorizing that. So that was just the one question that we'd gotten earlier, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions, or we'd be looking for your approval on this resolution tonight.
Okay, is there any comments from the council, questions on it? There's not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget amendments, resolution R. 20-13 dated today.
I'll second. First from Councilman Porter, second from Councilman McComber. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, or sorry, roll call. McComber?
Aye.
Podeska?
Aye.
Karn?
Aye.
Wildin?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to business item number two, fiscal year 2020, 2021 tentative budget, resolution R. 20-14.
Justin? Okay. This is the first step in the budget approval process tonight. We're looking at the approval of the recommend, or the tentative budget for fiscal year 2021. The requests that were submitted in the packet are the same requests that have been discussed through the budget process, and also the same requests that were presented at the council retreat. But if there's any additional questions or clarifications we can make at this time, we're happy to do so.
Okay, if there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the fiscal year 2020, 21 tentative budget, resolution R. 20-14 dated today.
I have a first from Councilman Wildin.
Second.
Second from Councilman Karn. Any further discussion? Councilman Podeska?
Aye.
Karn?
Aye.
Wildin?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Business item one, 2250 North Redwood Road, general plan amendment and rezone, development agreement and concept plan.
Mayor and Council, tonight is a request to do a general plan amendment and rezone. This went to the Planning Commission in October. We had a little time to work on the development agreement between then and now. And so it's basically a change to the general plan to take what you see there in purple from office to office warehouse, and then rezone that portion that is currently mixed use on regional commercial to office warehouse with the tentative concept plan you see here, which is a little bit better visualized.
You're not sharing your screen, so I don't think they can see it all.
Can you, can you see the screens?
We cannot.
No.
It's going through the YouTube feed, I'm not sure how it.
You, you need to go down on the Zoom and hit share screen.
We'll get this.
See, this is why I turned it on on here, so I could help you guys out.
Thanks, Stephen, we, we couldn't have done this without you.
I, that's why I'm here. I'm not touching Jim.
Actually, you want to share the other screen? Go to the.
You'll, you'll see.
Oh, there you go.
Yep, it's up now.
That's it.
Okay, we'll go back to the start here. General plan amendment and rezone for the property you see here in blue outlined in purple, which is currently office in the general plan to go to office warehouse. And then the, the rezone would be taking the mixed-use and regional commercial property to office warehouse, combining it with the portion that was already LW. With the concept plan of multiple office warehouse buildings, potentially a gas station, C store there at the top. Conceptually, the building elevations, and again, the concept plan and elevations are just that at this point, they're not, not bound to follow these. As you see, just some colored renditions of, of what it could look like, not a colored version of the site plan. You do have a copy of the plan, Planning Department checklist, which does outline some deficiencies as far as the concept plan review. Again, you're not bound by those as well, just be informal feedback on the concept plan. But the core of the request would be the general plan amendment and the rezone of the property.
Any questions from the council?
I, I don't necessarily have a concern with the rezone. As far as the concept plan, the, the two that I saw, two major ones that I saw was the 35-foot building height, as well as the 10-foot setbacks, interior setbacks.
Right, but I believe those are redlined, so, yeah, the applicant will have to address those at site plan stage, should you.
Okay, I could, I didn't see anywhere where there was a 10-foot interior setback, and so I was confused by that.
In, in, in that zone, there is, that is redlined on the plans, the applicant is aware.
Right, I just, on the plans, I don't see anywhere where there's a 10-foot.
Right, right, the, the, yeah, the plans you got, I don't think were the redline version.
Oh, okay, I see. As far as the 35-foot, that might be something we want to revisit for the office warehouse, just because a lot of the tilt-up that we're seeing go in, like on Mill Pond and stuff like that, is larger than 35 feet, but still is, you know, a very nice product and stuff like that. So maybe, maybe something we want to, we want to look at. That was my only comment.
Okay, I've made a note of that.
Dave, when this came to planning in October, I remember they were missing the, the continuation of the trails. Is that, is that in here? I didn't, I don't, I didn't look for it, I just remember that.
It, it is in the development agreement that the trail will be, of course, you have the Redwood Road Trail, and you have the trail on the canal. And if you recall now, that east, on the east side of this concept plan to your right, that's all the now property that will be also going into Lehigh, but the, the canal trail will go in as part of this, it's in the development agreement.
Okay, yeah, it was the canal trail that I think was missing at the planning stage, so, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I don't have a problem with the rezone. I just want to also make sure that they, I don't, we need to look at the four-sided architecture with the office commercial. Obviously, the backside is very commercial and flat, and the design needs to be in the front. But some of the sides, the side elevations are not acceptable because of the long, straight windows looking like institutional. So we need to make sure that any part that is least facing Redwood Road has the variating, variation in architecture. On the backside, where the trucks are coming in and that's facing east, I can be a little bit more flexible, we can maybe look at that because that is not necessarily going to be seen in, in, within the city when people are driving through it. So I just want to make sure that's being noted.
Yeah, there, there is a note towards that, and if you recall, changes you made to the code not too long ago exempts this type of building from the maximum 75% of one material, but they still have to comply with all the other articulation requirements as well, four-sided architecture still.
Right, and I'm just saying, like, if they come in and are asking for some leniency or some variation, we need to look at the code on the part that's not visible at all by any resident or by Redwood Road that's facing east, that's facing, that's what now is facing into Lehigh, which we just annexed, we, we just released into Lehigh. I'm willing to have a conversation because I'd hate for them to spend a lot of money back there when they could be putting that money into the front-facing towards, where the whole purpose of it is that when people are driving by or neighbors or things like that, they're not negatively impacted. So I just want to make sure we're following the spirit of that, of our purpose and not necessarily enforcing something that is not really realistic.
And that was something I noticed as well, was just maybe, you know, office warehouse might need three-sided architecture instead of four-sided, because the truck bay, there's only so much you can do to dress up a truck bay.
Right, and we're, and like, and Chris, to your point, where it's not even being seen or facing any of our residents or anything, there's definitely some opportunity there. But just that side elevation that you can see in that picture in the middle, that's the one that I'm more concerned with.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request to amend the general plant land use, land use map and rezone property generally at 2250 North Redwood Road as outlined in exhibit one, with the findings and conditions in the staff report dated. Is that the correct date, December 31, 2019?
No, that is on March, do, March 3rd.
Okay, March 3rd, 2019?
2020.
2020, sorry. Reading right off here, sorry.
I will go ahead and second that.
I have a first from Councilman Karn, a second from Councilman Podeska. Any further discussion? Do a roll call, Councilman McComber?
Aye.
Wildin?
Aye.
Karn?
Aye.
Podeska?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Business item two, Ring Road general plan amendment and rezone, city initiated.
Mayor and Council, this is also another general plan amendment and rezone. This is the property within the Ring Road right-of-way and future right-of-way, of course, because all Ring Road is not in yet. The current land use is institutional, the current zone is R. 110. Here's the general plan map, as you see, currently institutional. Then the zone is R. 110, and the proposal is to take that to neighborhood commercial, both in the general plan and the zone designation. No concept plan at this time, this is a staff-initiated application.
Any questions from the council?
No, I just want to say that this is the type of thing that I'm very happy to see. I think, you know, the fact that we're losing R. 110 residential and replacing it with commercial, I, I hope we can see this throughout the city as commercial continues to seek to locate out here.
Okay, there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we approve business item two, including all staff findings and conditions.
I'll second.
I have a first from Councilman Wildin, a second from Councilman Podeska. Any further discussion? Councilman Karn?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Podeska?
Aye.
Comber?
Aye.
Wildin?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Business item three, award of engineering services contract for well number seven, equipping, equipping to Hanson Allen and Loose.
Jerry? Which one are you? Oh, you're at the podium now?
Mm-hmm, thank you. Mayor and Council, this item is for an approval of a engineering services contract with Hanson Allen and Loose for the design and construction administration to equip well seven. This is the well that's north of the intersection of 2300 West slash Saratoga Road and Pioneer Crossing. This is in line with our capital facilities plans and is needed to supply water for the ongoing development in that area, including Pirelli and North Shore. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
I have a quick question, Mayor, please?
Yes.
How are we with, working with D.R. Horton to get the connectivity into the secondary system? Where are we at with that?
We are working right now on a agreement with them, a little bit of a negotiation. Right now, the agreement that we're proposing would be the city would fund the equipping of the well, and D.R. Horton would pay for the distribution connection from the well to their neighborhood. This would be for culinary water. To clarify, they're using canal shares for their secondary, and they built a secondary pipeline down Saratoga Road back to the point of connection near the new fire station. So this agreement that we're working on with them for well seven would be for culinary. That would require an amendment to our current plans to, to move that from the secondary master, from the secondary plan to the culinary plan.
So, so this is one of those things that's a little bit tricky. This is a secondary well. We are going to, i- i- its quality is that it can be a drinking water well. What they're asking is that, that we would do a cross-connection, which is, is allowed, that would allow us to service our drinking water system as well as our secondary system. So we're working on a development agreement that would allow for some of this use to be in the drinking water system, but, but it is a secondary well, and we will be equipping it for our secondary system. But it will require, as Jeremy indicated, some amendments to our impact fee facilities plan. It's a rather complicated thing, but we're, it's, it's innovative and we're excited about the opportunity. But we're working on that development agreement, and that would be part of their, their water rights application for some of the well water rights that we're going to be transferring into our system.
Thank you for the clarification. I was understood that it was a secondary, for the secondary system. Thank you, Mark.
And I'm glad to know there's water there. Last time we did this, it was an exploratory drill, wasn't it?
We've actually owned this well for a number of years, and it's already been proven in its test pumps, so we're, we're pretty excited about that. We just have never equipped it. And so we actually have, I believe, besides this, we have two other wells that have already been drilled, one other well that's already been drilled, and it will be a matter of equipping that at some point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move to award engineering services contract for wells number seven to Hanson Allen and Loose, resolution R. 20-15 dated today, for the amount of $213,500.
I'll second that. I have a first from Councilman Porter, or Podeska, and a second from Councilman McComber. Any further discussion? Okay, I will do a roll call. Podeska?
Aye.
Karn?
Aye.
Wildin?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have the business item four, award of engineering services contract for Pony Express Parkway, extension to P.E.P.G. Engineering.
Mayor and Council, this is a MAG-funded project. We were able to petition and get approval to move design funding up a year so that we can get a head start on this project. We solicited proposals from various engineering firms on our pre-qualification list, and having reviewed those, we are recommending awarding this to P.E.P.G. If you look at the attached bid tab, although they were not the, they were the second lowest in overall pricing, but there were some concerns with both past performance on the low bidder, as well as some inconsistencies in the information they provided in the proposal, which is why we did not recommend net wording it to them, but to P.E.P.G. instead. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
My only question was the, it says the, the funding will come available at the end of 2020, is that fiscal year 2020, so we should be able to start in June?
October, it's a federal fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
But we've done a reimbursement agreement, or we're, we've got a reimbursement agreement, so we can actually pay for this and get the engineering work started. And when the funding becomes available next fiscal year, we will get reimbursed for that.
Good point. We, we could begin, we Good point. We we could begin constru- we have uh funding up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars available now to get reimbursed immediately. If we choose to go to construction prior to October of this year, uh, we we could do that. We just wouldn't be able to submit a reimbursement draw until after October of this year.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we award engineering services contract for Pony Express Parkway extension to P E P G Engineering in the amount of three hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-six, or seven hundred sixty-seven dollars.
I have a first from Councilman Porter.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Padeska. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Uh, Councilman McComber?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Wilden?
Aye.
Karn?
Aye.
Padeska?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We have the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Move approval.
I made.
We've made it.
Chris?
Chris?
No, Porter.
Okay, Chris Porter, I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second, Councilman Wilden, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. And note, is there a need for close session, Mark?
Uh, none, uh, none this evening. I apologize. I did not write down who who did the first and second for item number four. The previous one. I had uh Porter and then Wilden for the minutes, uh, the previous motion. I'm sorry.
I did, I did the first on on a business item four.
Okay, and who was the second?
Padeska did the second.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure I took extra good notes for the recorder. Thank you.
Okay, we'll we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Good night.